Good evening, today is Monday. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 7th, 2016. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of Hold to discuss the budget. It is eight... Is that clock right? I forgot my... Eight forty-two. That's Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
Wagner, absent. Mulliner.
Here.
Dwyer.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Holmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Honquist, absent. Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. Agenda item two announcements. My simple announcement is council should all have a detailed budget review schedule. I applaud the city manager on his optimism on what we're going to get done tonight. Not necessarily share that optimism, but I think I'm looking forward to digging in and getting as much done as possible. I will remind council, as Chair of these proceedings, I don't believe good decisions are made when we approach the ten-thirty hour, so I will cut it off at that point. If we get to ten, ten-fifteen, I'll give the option... I'll check the pulse of the council, but I'll also give the option to the city manager. We can stop earlier, throw in some little stuff, but we will not go past ten-thirty. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on with public comment. Public comment, we handle the same way as we do our council meetings. This is an opportunity for anybody to provide comment directed toward council. You can comment on anything you so choose. We ask you to keep your comments three minutes out of respect for the amount of work we have to get done here this evening and out of respect for other folks who may want to talk. When your name is read, I ask that you approach the microphone over there by Chief Ruth. State your name for the record as we are recording. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Claude Pagash, five-six-six West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, five-six-six West Gladys. Budget season. There's going to be groups coming up here, all department heads. They're going to make their statements. City manager is going to give his opinion. Well, I'd like to start with one point. Social Security has told me that they are entitling me to a three-tenths percent increase in my Social Security. I doubt if any division that's going to come up to talk is going to be satisfied with three-tenths percent increase in their budget. They're all going to come up. They're all going to say, "We need more. We need more money. Things are more expensive." In reality, it's true. It is. But maybe you ought to ask them just one question. How are the people that you represent that have households, that have children, that have medical bills? Where are they going to get the money to pay all the desired increases? All for good reasons. Every one of them. They can't exist without more money. And the council has been very generous this year. It has given away large blocks of money. It also has an ordinance where the sales tax, which might have helped defer some of this, is kept by those in a TIF. And we've created more TIFs. So you're going to vote on it, and they're going to say they need more. You're not going to hesitate. There won't be any questions asked. They just need it. But you ask them out of those families, they're going to support themselves. You're part of those families. And for all those people that have reached my fine age, that still reside within the borders of this city, I'm sure you can tell them, they needed it, and you're going to have to come up with it. Unfortunately, you're the group that's going to do it.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your question or your comments, please.
Surely. I got $114 million worth of general obligation bonds, and I just had finance say they're going to borrow another $27 million.
Clerk Spencer, anyone else signed up this evening?
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
That's it for public comments. For those who signed up at this time, is there anyone in the audience who do not have an opportunity to sign up on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time before we continue our meeting? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that concludes our public comments. Onto agenda item four, business before the committee. I will turn it over to City Manager Grabowski at this time.
Thank you. As you indicated, Mayor, we do have a budget schedule out now. What we try to do each year is to schedule those with boards and representatives that need to come in on specific dates. So this evening, we do have the library here with the Library Board President, and next meeting, we will have the museum here. The president of the foundation could not be here tonight, so we needed to push that out one more night. Beyond that, we do have some staff members here that we'd like to get to their departments tonight if possible. As you indicated before, we can rearrange a little bit as we need to, as the time grows on, to accommodate that. I have some comments to make about our general budget, but before I do that, I would just turn it over to Ms. Harper and Ms. Baker for their presentation on the library.
Okay. And I forgot to mention, before we jump in, before we turn it over. Same as last time, same thing I mentioned will be the same for all of our budget meetings moving forward until we get to the end. We'll run it like a normal meeting, take questions, et cetera. But if we get on an item that any alderman wishes to have further information or discuss it further, or possibly make motions to that line item at a later time, we will at some point cut off conversation, hopefully agree to cut off conversation, and put it on our circle back list for our circle back meeting at the end of this process. Back to you. Perfect.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight to review the library's budget. So I'm Marsha Baker, the president of the Library Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by introducing Sue Sadowski in the back. She's still here. My fellow trustee who's here this evening. And of course, you know Mary Beth Harper, and she will be who's here by my side, and she'll be happy to answer any questions after the presentation. So first, I'd like to present some highlights from the past year. The library saw a 5% increase in visitors to the building or an additional 2,000 patrons a month. We attribute much of this increase to new amenities added during the 2015 renovation of the second floor. The addition of creative studios, a business center, a teen area, and nine additional study rooms has brought more people to the library. Attendance at library programming is up 29% for the year. We offer an array of programs from crafting to technology to Friday afternoon movies. And Elmhurst residents are enjoying the sense of community that these library programs offer. One of the highlights of the year was that the Elmhurst Public Library celebrated its 100th birthday in March. Patrons were invited to attend a party on Sunday morning before the library opened, where they enjoyed gourmet pancakes while perusing historical pictures and listening to York High School musicians perform. It was fun for everybody to see how we've changed. Looking forward to 2017, the library will open a makerspace in the basement. We are calling it the Makery. The Makery will provide a hands-on creative space for patrons to invent, collaborate, and design as they transform their ideas into reality. Crafting programs and do-it-yourself materials have always been popular with Elmhurst residents. With the installation of the Makery, patrons will have a place in the community where they can connect with others while creating. The space will include a laser cutter, laminator, embroidery machine, sewing machines, 3D printers, and creative technology software, for a start. Makerspaces exist in other communities, and now Elmhurst will have its own dedicated space, too. We're excited to see what will be invented and created in the Makery. The kids' library is starting a new program to encourage parents to read to their young children. The 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten campaign promotes early literacy by asking parents and caregivers to read to their infant, toddler, or preschooler with the goal of reading 1,000 books before the child reaches kindergarten. When a child has read 1,000 books, he or she will earn a special prize and be eligible to attend a graduation party. With our vast collection of picture books, the library is the perfect place to champion this important early literacy campaign. Community usage patterns led us to renovate the adult services area, and it's time to do the same for the kids' area. Parents are aware of the link between literacy and play, making our learning garden one of the most popular areas in the library. We need to expand the area because it is often full to capacity with busy children and caregivers. Some storytimes also remain very popular, and technology-related programming for kids has expanded. The kids' area needs to change to meet the high expectations of our patrons. The library collaborates with other community organizations to ensure that Elmhurst remains one of the best places to live in the Chicagoland area. Everything we do is contingent upon our community finding our services essential to enhancing their quality of life. Before you tonight, you have our budget, which includes not only our operating expenses, but also the funds needed for repayment of our building bonds. The library has leveled conservatively for the past few years. We continue that trend this year with a 2.5% increase. Thank you for helping us make the library such a successful resource for the community. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council, as well as the city manager and the rest of the city staff who help us on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Are we doing questions now, or Mary Beth, are you adding to? Okay. Any questions or comments for the library? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And thank you for starting us off with a good summary, because part of that summary already answered one of my questions, so that's one question less. In regards to the Makery, or maybe it is in regards to what renovations were already done, what I saw was, I think, on page 177, line item 80-23, the capital outlay. Is that for the renovations that have been done to pay off that debt? Or is that for the Makery improvements or some other improvement?
The $1 million in that line is for the kids' renovation, which we intend to start working on this year, and the Makery, which is actually currently taking place right now.
Okay, so it covers both?
Right.
Okay. Then just one other comment, really, and that is on the same page. I just found it interesting, line item 40-04, and then the digital content, which is books, and then the digital content being 40-36, it seems like they're either both staying flat or relatively increasing, where you would think in today's day and age that the digital content would significantly increase and the books would either be totally level or start significantly decreasing. But it's interesting to see that it's pretty much status quo with the books, and then the digital content keeps on rising. Is that a correct assessment?
It's about right, yep. In fact, what we're seeing in circulation statistics is that book circulation is kind of, I like to say, going like this, gradually decreasing. Where digital circulation keeps increasing, but we don't have the availability of getting lots and lots of digital materials yet. So we're going to continue to see that same trend. $425,000 last year for books. This year, we brought it down to $413,000. Last year, $288,000 in digital content. This year, $300,000. So we're probably not going to see books drop off like this. It's not going to happen. People are going to still read, and we're not going to see digital content rise dramatically. However, you will continue to see that increase and books decrease a little bit.
And the last one, maybe this is a little bit in jest, but anything invented in the Makery, does the Elmhurst library get a cut?
Yes, and the city, too, because we're part of the city.
Thank you.
We shall see.
Any other comments or questions? I will say a couple of things. First of all, and I kind of use this in my speech, but not only is it the 100th year anniversary, but it was the 10th anniversary of the new building. And at the time of the planning, so let's say the new building was planned even five years before that, we're talking 15 years ago, I don't think that at the time and the planning, everybody knew that you could have fit the entire library in something this big. So it's been incumbent upon library staff and the board to get creative and make the library relevant. And I bring this up as a good problem. If you ever try to get a parking spot at the library, I think you know that they are doing a good job in making the library relevant. I think it's continued... It's great to hear about the Makery. The library continues to reinvent itself and make itself relevant. I will add, part of that digital content, anybody who's listening, I tell people this almost once a week, and I'm surprised who doesn't know it, but there is an incredible digital resource that our library offers. I'm not sure if you still support 3M, but definitely Overdrive, both.
3M is now called the Cloud Library. I think 3M sold it off, and we certainly have Overdrive still, too.
So for anybody who's interested in any digital books or audiobooks, if you're like me and you spent 20 bucks for every audiobook, it's free at the library, and there's literally hundreds of thousands of these available. So I would encourage you to get to know your library even better, download the digital app, Overdrive, connect to the library, and utilize it to its full extent. I want to thank Sue Sadowski and Mary Beth and Marsha Baker for all of your hard work and your presentation this evening, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Grabowski, what's next?
We are going to do a little shuffle on the seats here. And I'm going to ask Chief Freeman to join me up here, along with Julian McDonough, I And I'm going to hand the mic over to Chief Freeman, who, believe it or not, has been here a whole month. And he is going to take us through the fire department budget.
Great. Chief Freeman, the floor is yours. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. And depending on who you talk to, it's either been a short month or a long month. There's many items of significance that I'm sure you've taken a look at from pages 44 to 50 inclusive. We've identified many of the highlights of the past year, and I won't revisit those unless you wish. That said, there was one significant item that I would like to point out. There was a very sizable grant in the amount of $420,000 that was spearheaded by the deputy chief that involves 12 neighboring fire departments, and it's an emergency driving simulator, which will be shared by the 12 departments, including the Elmhurst Fire Department. There was an 80-20 grant which was received, which is quite substantial. But as I indicated, the other items are already in there, and I won't bore you with reading those to you. I would like to talk a little bit, though, about some of the things that have taken place in this short month. We continue to see a tremendous outpacing of emergency calls, and very specifically, a dichotomy between the fire and EMS calls. We've seen well in excess of a 10% increase in the last five years, and almost 30% in the last 10 years of EMS calls, and are considerably outpacing fire emergency calls. And it continues to be a trend that I don't see diminishing. Fire through good public education and fire prevention have remained relatively flat, but the EMS calls from transient population and the like in an aging community have continued to increase. Additionally, in the last four weeks, I would like to talk about some structure that has been placed by various communication venues. We've established numerous programs in the fire department. There is a new weekly command and chief officer meeting that takes place every Monday, as a matter of fact, at City Hall, that involves all the chiefs. And this is a non-compensated meeting. Everybody comes in on a weekly basis to discuss current events, strategy, policy issues, changes in procedures in the department, so that that can trickle down to the officers under the chief's command. There are also now new mandatory monthly, every third Monday of the month, all the officers meet in a forum so that they can discuss issues that are taking place as well. And we have had labor management meetings now, and we've established a bimonthly labor management meeting of the executive board of Local 3541 and the management team of the fire district to talk about things of concern in the department. And we will meet on an every other month basis, whether we have specific agenda items to talk about or nothing at all, and we can just drink coffee and talk about items of interest on both sides. So there's a lot of things going on. We're meeting, we're communicating on a very, very regular basis. I think that's important. I think it's important to the personnel. I know it's important to the council, and I wanted to make you aware of these meetings that are going on right now. And I can't go forward without acknowledging in the line of communication, a very important committee meeting that has taken place in the past, and that involves Lieutenant Dick Dufort and his subcommittee that have met with several, if not all, of you over key issues of concern in the fire department over the last several months. And I'm aware, I've been brought up to speed on what those meetings have involved, and I want to commend Lieutenant Dufort and his people for raising issues and having that open dialogue with the board. And I appreciate the aldermen taking the time out of your busy schedules to talk with them. To that end, one of the things that is included in a carryforward into the FY17 budget, at the direction of the mayor, asking it to be one of my top priorities when I came on board and after numerous conversations with City Manager Grabowski, was addressing the issue of the three firefighter vacancies that exist in the fire department. And these positions are remaining in the budget. They were included in the FY16 budget. They are remaining in the 17 budget, following much discussion with the manager, so as to be at our full strength in the fire department in 2017. After these conversations and after my studying it very extensively in the first four weeks here, I think that it's a necessary thing to do to bring us back to full strength, given the options obviously included in the budget as a corresponding decrease in the overtime, which has been in place as a result of those three vacancies. I anticipate a timeline that would allow, in conjunction with the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, to bring forth a current eligibility list and to reach out to the next three eligible candidates off that list, begin to process them, begin to send them through the necessary pre-testing, conditional offers of employment, bring them on board in a candidacy role, and put them through a probationary period, which would last about four to six weeks. Start to finish, we should be able to bring these people on board. If we even begin the preliminary work in December, we should be able to have them ramped up and ready to go to work at the end of the first quarter of 2017, probably in the month of March of 2017. Additionally, in the budget document, I would draw your attention to a couple of items that I'd like to address. 3018, there's a substantial increase in the expenses going to Ducom, our combined dispatch agency out of Glendale Heights. But accompanying this is a J form on page 123, which explains the increase. They're no longer supporting a communication line between Ducom and our two stations, so there's going to be a corresponding increase that will be amortized over a period of time, and that's accounting for one of the larger increases that you're seeing in the fire department under 3018, bringing it up to $283,579. Additionally, on line 5001 is increased cost for remodeling. This is at Station 1 only, and this involves a kitchen and a bathroom remodeling that will take place during next year, which is out of necessity due to age and obsolescence at that facility. Another item I'd like to bring your attention to is 6086, which is the foreign insurance, the 2% non-domicile monies that are coming in. We anticipate about a 3% increase in the 2% monies, and therefore, there's a corresponding 3% increase on the expense side of that ledger as well, to account for that anticipated increase in revenue. Lastly, under capital, we're going to encumber the monies that were set aside during this year's capital for a new rescue pumper, which previously has been addressed before the council. This rescue pumper is a specialty vehicle, which will replace a 1994 Emergency One Squad, which has seen better days and just recently received a tremendous amount of work due to obsolescence and maintenance fatigue. We had earmarked about $688,000 for this vehicle. Recent conversations that the deputy and I had with the vendor, this vehicle will come in south of $600,000, which is a considerable decrease from the amount of money that was earmarked for it. And the review with the specifications is consistent with the scope of the project that the committee originally set out, but it eliminates some things that were not necessary, also redressed the issue of the trade-in value of the 1994 squad, as well as the discount for the payment upfront to the vendor. So even with moving that forward into 2017, the fire department's budget for next fiscal year represents a decrease from both the budgeted and the actual for 2016 year-to-date. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions on that, on the fire department items or anything in general.
Not bad for three and a half weeks.
I'm sorry.
I said not bad for three and a half weeks. Alderman Honquist, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question on 1006, sick payout.
Say it again, please.
Line item 1006, sick payout.
Got it.
Very concerning to me that we've had a two-and-a-half-time increase from 14 to 15. It looks like then it would have been a small decrease, and yet it looks like an increase yet again this year. And I'm concerned, maybe I don't understand what sick payout means, and maybe there's a specific explanation for it, but I was just... That kind of jumped off the page to me.
The sick payout, Alderman, would be the obliged time that an individual has accrued and is booked as a liability, and is due to that individual upon retirement. So it's put in anticipation based on those eligible for retirement, and would be the amount of money that we would determine would be made available in retirement for the accrued time, the accrued sick time that that person would be owed.
Okay, so it's a benefit effectively.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Mulliner.
Mine's more of a statement. I'm very pleased to see that we're going to hire three firemen. I'm extremely disappointed that we didn't hire them last year. We had the funds available. It's very obvious because the dollar amounts are in the overtime, but I am pleased to see that we're going to bring ourselves back up to full force, and I appreciate the timing on that, as far as going in as quickly as we possibly can. But I am concerned about the fact that last year, it was presented as if it was a budgetary issue, and the reality is that the budget was spent, the same amount of money was spent. It was just spending in overtime.
Okay. Other questions?
Alderman Bram. Thank you. Actually, Alderman Mulliner just stole one of my observations, or maybe got to it before I did. I think, looking at that, by holding back from actually fulfilling those three positions this past year, and there was mention of concern over it being a budget issue and the state not providing the revenue stream that we anticipated, if you look, it's pretty much a break-even, and I think we need to take that into consideration moving forward, that, you know, if we're not fully fulfilling what we have budgeted in regards to staff, we're not gaining anything from a dollars and cents perspective because we spent just as much in OT that we would have, at least what was budgeted, from a salary perspective. The other thing I wanted to actually make a question on, and Chief, welcome to your first budget meeting. Thank you. Usually, we discuss fire for about a good hour and a half, so buckle up. No, I'm kidding. But I will say that one of the things that wasn't touched on, and you touched on in your summary every question that I had, other than this, and this is in regards to ALS, I don't want to get into a deep policy discussion on ALS, but I do want to understand, is that budgeted in the 2017 budget? And I understand it's definitely would impact from a capital perspective, or maybe not capital, but expenses, right, to have the engines updated with ALS capability, maybe some certification may be needed. some certification may be needed, so there would be some expenses there, and there might even be some salary impacts as well. So those are the three areas that I would assume may or may not be impacted when we talk about ALS. What does this budget reflect? Does it reflect just where we are today, which is BLS, or does it reflect ALS? And if it does not reflect ALS, what are the dollars and cents, and where would that be impacted?
You're correct on what those issues would impact, and as I indicated in my opening comments, both the mayor and the manager indicated what were high priorities early on in my taking over. Definitely, one was the three firefighter vacancies, and immediately following that was whether or not there was a need for the ALS companies. This budget, Alderman, does not anticipate that at this point, because that's something that definitely needs further research, as far as the needs, the demands upon the existing ambulances, the additional request for ambulances from mutual or automatic aid, that being third and fourth ambulance calls, the response time of the ambulances versus the fire suppression companies that are arriving on the scene. So there's still a lot that I haven't, we haven't collectively come to a determination as to whether or not that program will come to fruition. So as a result of that, this budget proposal, to directly answer your question, does not contemplate the Elmhurst Fire Company's progressing to ALS staffing or equipping at this time. But that's something that the director and the manager and mayor, I'm still researching, still working with Elmhurst Hospital and the folks down there as to needs, demands. We're looking at everything from response time to turnaround time, how long it takes an ambulance, once it's at Elmhurst, to go back in service, return to quarters, or return to availability, the frequency of calls. We just completed a hour of the day, day of the week demand loading, to see where the calls were, and see where the volume is, see where the peak demands are, if we have an ability to look at doing this during peak times, and what the frequencies actually are, and if they're sustained. So we did not include it, because we haven't come to a conclusion at this point. It would primarily involve training, certification levels, equipping the apparatus with the ALS gear, which is generally in the area, probably about $50,000 to $60,000 per unit, and then no doubt, some type of a salary issue that would have to be addressed. But we're not at that point, because that's definitely a much more convoluted and comprehensive problem that we're addressing right now, and we don't have a definitive answer for you at this point.
So a follow-up to that would be, I would just like to request this as a circle-back item, and maybe have a little bit more in-depth discussion, and thank you, Chief, for all that information. It sounds like you already got a jumpstart on what ALS would take, and where we're at, and do we need it. You know, as has been mentioned many times in the past, budgeting doesn't mean we're spending, so I would like to at least mark this as a circle-back, so we can discuss it towards the end of the budget cycle.
I have to tell you, it's been a very regular conversation between myself and the manager as far as where that issue is going, the need for it, and what the pros and cons are, and there are some on both sides of it.
Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add a couple points to the ALS conversation. You know, as we're all aware, the union has made this an issue. The union or their surrogates have certainly brought up the ALS issue. There's a referral before my committee, right now, our committee, myself and Alderman Deuter, to look at just that, the ALS, how we provide medical services. As the chief mentioned earlier, we know that the medical calls are going up greatly. We know fire calls are going down. I don't want to say substantially, but they're going down. And the referral that our committee will eventually take up with the chief's leadership will be, are we staffed and manned properly for the changing environment? You know, certainly, some members of our department think ALS is the way to go, based on what other towns are doing. We're going to take a good look at it, again, under chief's leadership. Maybe we need a third ambulance. If medical calls are the ones going up, maybe additional EMTs or ambulances are needed. Maybe ALS chase cars are needed. But we're going to take a look at all of that, to make sure, whatever we do as a city under chief's leadership and Deputy Chief Anishevitz's leadership, that we do the right thing for our citizens in the most efficient way possible. As we all know, we've got a tremendous relationship with Superior Ambulance. They provide top-notch service, have for 30-plus years. That is a very efficient use of taxpayer money. Can we expand on that to provide these services? We're going to take a look at all of that. Certainly, some people feel strongly that ALS is the way to go, or ALS engines. We're going to take a good, hard look at it. Chief's already started. The committee members, we've started to ask questions. For example, one of the things I was interested in are the number of, chief mentioned mutual aid, I think we all know what mutual aid is, the number of times our ambulances are going outside of the city of Elmhurst, as opposed to outside ambulances from Elmhurst coming in. It almost mirrors what the fire mutual aid is. Our fire trucks are going out 60% of the time, more than fire trucks coming in. Ambulance calls, and Deputy Chief Anishevitz has already pulled the data on that, two to one. Our ambulances are going outside of Elmhurst two times more than other ambulances are coming in. You can take from that whatever you want, but it is a data point that we will continue to look at. But we understand that the nature of medical emergency response is changing. The Police Department has, will be involved in that as well, and some of the frontline services they provide, are there additional tools that we can arm them with as potential first responders? We're going to take a look at all of that, but as the chief has said, and the manager and the mayor have said, you know, the first thing we asked chief to do was to get to the bottom of the three firefighters. He's done that. The next big task that we'll take on, that he'll take on, is the ALS question.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Go to Kevin, I'm sorry, Alderman York first.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Levin.
So I guess I just have a question on the, on circle-back items in general, but we've discussed the circle-back, and in this particular case, it's been identified as a committee problem. I don't understand how we're going to circle back and have a meaningful discussion on this in two weeks.
Well, I would say this. Part of the circle-back is staff double-checks with whomever has made the request, and sometimes we get to the circle-back, and staff has already answered their questions. So we'll see if there's any additional stuff that needs to be discussed either prior or at the circle-back. All right, Alderman Levin.
Just a question of clarification. You talked about the piece of equipment in line 8006, the $688,000 item. Is that going to be then not purchased in this year? It'll be purchased next year, so we're going to change the estimate for 2016 down to zero and move it over to the same line in 2017?
We'll carry it over into 2017. We had those monies set aside for 2016. Working with the vendor and the scope of the project, we've made some changes. It's come down quite a bit from the original estimate, so we'll encumber those monies, and we'll move those over into 2017.
So we have to populate that line item, so the money's there for 2017?
It gets reapprapplied.
I think that what the process that we use for carryovers is the final ordinance dictates that number on a carryover like that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Dunn.
We had talked about the wage issue, the full-time versus the overtime this past year, and it seemed to net out equal, but another thing I want to point out is in the benefits section, you would see a savings on the actuals for 2016 versus the budgeted. Probably, it looks like about over $100,000 in benefits operating with the, without those three. It wasn't a complete net zero. It was actually a savings, you know, I would infer.
Okay, other questions? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two comments. I don't have any questions, as a lot of us have spent a lot of extra time with the Fire Department over the last few months. I do want to say a couple things. First, you know, we obviously greatly value the protection and the service that all the men and women of the Elmhurst Fire Department provide us. That has never been in question, and, you know, we say it over and over, that we trust and value in what the men and women of the Elmhurst Fire Department do, and we really appreciate that. Stealing one of the mayor's lines, you know, when most of us are running away from a situation, they're running towards a situation, as is the case with the police. So I want to state that. Second, chief mentioned Lieutenant Dufort, and I want to second that, but not just Lieutenant Dufort, and I know I'll miss some of the names, because there was six or seven of them, but Andy Gear, Tom O, Steve Nelson, a few others. Those firefighters stepped up at a time when, in all honesty, the relationship or the communication between the Fire Department and the city was a little tense, and Lieutenant Dufort and the others really stepped up and really stepped forward, and I thank them for that. It takes leadership to do that, and I believe helped us get to the point where we all feel good about adding the firefighters back in, per the chief's suggestion. Finally, and I've said this before in committee, I may have said it on the dais, the Elmhurst Fire Department is among the best-equipped, best-trained, best-fire departments in the state of Illinois. I firmly believe that. The more I've spent time with the Fire Department and looked into these things and listened to the firefighters, their concerns, but also what they're happy about, I have no doubt whatsoever that we have a top-notch Fire Department from manpower, from training, from equipment. The budget reflects that. Chief and Deputy Chief's leader illustrate that, and I think that's important, because, you know, some of the conversation over the last few months has not been along those same lines, but I think it's important that we call that out and recognize that we have a very good Fire Department. Thank you.
On behalf of the men and women of the Elmhurst Fire Department, thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I want to thank chief. I also want to mention, as part of that communication effort, Deputy Chief Anishevitz, acting chief at the time, was instrumental in helping us. Myself, City Manager Grabowski, Alderman Healy hit every shift and have opened up those lines of communications and extending that to the other elected officials. So I want to thank Bill Anishevitz as well. All right, City Manager Grabowski, are we done with?
Well, before we dismiss Chief Freeman, we do have two other fire-related items. The wireless radio and the ESDA budgets are on here as well.
Terrific.
If you have any questions, we're certainly here to answer them.
Very quickly, the Fireless Radio Fire Alarm Network, there's an increase that is due for one reason, and that is to related expenses from ADT for the installation of the radios at approximately $44,000 a year to ADT for that expense, so that accounts for any changes that you see in the fund for radio fire alarm.
Okay. Any questions? Alderman Bram.
Well, this is actually for ESDA, ESDA, on page 125, 40-98, Other Supplies.
Hold on one second. Are we done with E, wireless radio? Do they go together?
I believe we're done, if no one else has questions on it.
Okay. All right, and do you have anything to add before we go to Alderman Bram's question on this?
Oh, sir, just a modest increase, and this may anticipate your question as well, for the ESDA Civil Defense. Much of this is offset by a grant that we receive for 16, it's close to $20,000, that underwrites a lot of the cost of the equipment, as well as Don Novak, the director's wages. So any increases that you see from his wages to equipment is reflected in an offset by the grant that we receive from the state of Illinois.
Okay, Alderman Bram, additional comments or questions?
Yeah, just a brief one, because it's just, I guess I'd call it generic line item, 40-98, Other Supplies. Back in 2014, I know you weren't here, chief, it was about $12,000 and change, and now we're almost double, getting close to the double of $21,000. What does this line item cover?
Sometimes, these are anything from the assistance, some of the classes that we put on for the public, or assistance in the Police Department's Academy, Citizens Police Academy, batteries, replacement of supplies that they have when Don goes out with the MIC, the Mobile Incident Command, as was called out just the other day, to assist the Police Department, replacement of any of the electronics that go out, wear and tear of any of the usables, batteries, lights, and so forth. So while it does seem to be a catch-all, it's equipment that through supplies, and principally in the Mobile Command or any of Don's equipment that he needs to perform his duties, as they expire or go bad for replacement purposes.
The reason why I ask is because it was, the norm seemed to be $12,000 the one year, $12,499. The following year, in 2015, was $5,000 and change, $5,500 and change, and now the norm seems to be at $20,000, so I was just wondering if something new has come aboard, where this catch-all seems to grab at every budget cycle?
Most of it electronic replacements. The uniforms and gear and so forth are included in 33 through 75, but most of this is the replaceables and the usables, and a lot of that, again, in the Mobile and Incident Command vehicle that we house at Station One.
Thank you.
Or Station Two, I'm sorry.
Okay. City Manager Grabowski, does that cover us through E?
I believe it does.
ESDA, yes?
Yep.
Okay. Chief and Deputy Chief, thank you for everything. On to the Police Department.
I said, "Ask Chief Ruth to join me at the table." One item that I want to bring to the council's attention that kind of resonates through all of the budgets is the telephone line, and that's one item that is spread throughout all the budgets. And last year's budget, we had planned to go to a VoIP system, IP-based system, and we're working towards that, had budgeted that. We're carrying that over. We've encountered some issues with AT&amp;T that we're trying to work through, and that timeline has just not allowed us to do that during this fiscal year, unfortunately. We anticipated some significant cost savings with that, but we just haven't realized that yet, so you'll see that as a carryover here. If anybody had any questions on that, I wanted to bring that out.
Is that, are you talking on page 125? Or in general?
I'm sorry, did you say 145, Mayor?
125. I'm just wondering if there's a specific line item that addresses the telephone system, or is it spread out among, allocated to everyone's budget a little bit? Yes, Tom?
Under 3075, line 3075, telephone?
Right.
Yes, and that's spread through all the budgets.
Okay.
But just in case there was a question, why didn't we get that project done? I just wanted the council to understand that.
Got it, understood.
So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Ruth.
Good evening. I'm trying to keep it quick, but try to cover a lot of the ground. The proposed 2017 budget for the Police Department generally reflects an overall flat budget with a few notable increases in a few line items to accomplish some important new missions and some infrastructure projects. The Police Department remains focused on quality service, and service, 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 innovative partnerships within our community is really a stronghold for us, besides our conventional suppression of crime and protection of property. Couple highlights is we've continued our neighborhood roll call for year 2016, and we're fortunate enough to meet with over seven, I'm sorry, almost 700 residents as a result of the Neighborhood Roll Call program. The last few years, we've been able to bring to life the Citizens Police Academy, which kind of went to the wayside and has been quite active again with two classes each year, and we're finishing up the second one for 2016. In terms of staffing, the Police Department continues to operate at a budgeted 68 sworn officer levels. We're currently staffed at 66, which includes one who's currently in the Police Academy. We've used up our current eligibility police officers list, and we're going to be testing on Saturday, November 19th, to establish a new list. And this year, we've hired three new part-time police officers, and one is currently in the hiring process, and that brings our staffing for part-time police officers to 14, I'm sorry, 14 part-time police officers. We've expanded some of their duties to include some day shifts, tours of duty. We've noticed that there's a need, and that frees up the full-time officers, so they're not tied up with some ministerial tasks. We've seen an increase in 3018, which is DUCOM, and that's about a 3.5% increase over 2016. We're anticipating some new computer-rated dispatch RMS projects to occur in 2018. The reporting software is obsolete, and there'll be some new ones that'll be rolling into next year's budget. is obsolete. And there'll be some new ones that'll be rolling into next year's budget. Some other increases to talk about is 3048, which is, I'm sorry, let me go to 3040, which is document imaging. And there's an increase of 2,500 to convert some accumulated police reports. There's more officer training reports from paper forms to the digital formatting. And 3048, we see a slight increase in 1,500, and that's just an adjustment for the CPI. That's Dave Hahn and Associates, who continue to provide a very good service for us. And, you know, they're dealing with a lot of our young people and some of the issues that they're facing. And, but in a most recent discussion, there was somebody who was a little bit older and was having a difficult time adjusting to retirement. So it isn't just focused on some of the issues involving our young people. 3098 is other services. That's going to be some fees associated with increasing fees in live scan maintenance, which is our fingerprinting program, increase in heating and air conditioning maintenance contract, and 6,500 for Vigilant Solutions, which is our ALPR Automated License Plate Reader program and data services. 4098 is other supplies. And that's, we see some jumps in that area due to an increase in EMS equipments, $2,000 to purchase a new supply of Narcan as ours is due to expire next year. It was initially funded by the DuPage County Health Department, but they're no longer funding the Narcan program. So if we wish to continue having Narcan in our patrol cars, we're going to have to pay for that. So that's about, we anticipate $2,000. On a side note, we've, our police officers have deployed Narcan 13 times this calendar year. So Narcan has saved lives 13 times year-to-date. In anticipation for one of the new, the Annie Legear law, which was recently passed, we've identified $12,000 for EpiPens in the squad cars. So each of our squad cars would have an EpiPen. But before we can do that, the state, the training board, the Illinois Police Training and Standards Board has to have an approved curriculum. And we're waiting for them to roll that out. When they do, it's going to be one of my priorities to get as many of our people, in fact, all of our people, trained just as soon as humanly possible. So we'll be able to have fully trained police officers with EpiPens in their squads, available to them in the event that they need it. 5050, I'm sorry, 5001 is a building repair. And we put $60,000 in there to hire an engineering firm to study the police station for some proposed front desk renovations, possible lobby renovation. And this is going to come as a result of video cameras in one of the other lines and to assist with some future car reader controls. The way the front desk is currently set up, it's all glass. So any monitor that's in there, the public can look and see that. We currently don't have cameras in the jail cells. And it's one of the things that we'd be looking at doing in another line account. So if we have someone in custody in a lockup jail cell, we would be able to monitor them on camera, which would be much more safer and reduce our exposure and risk to liability. But the disadvantage of it, the way the building currently is, is that would, wouldn't give them the privacy that they would need. So we've got some challenges in order to keep up with some of the technology. 8023 is building improvements. And our police station is 26 years old. It'll be 27 in March. And the air conditioning has failed beyond repair. And most of the parts are obsolete. From talking to Public Works, and they're anticipating a $500,000 cost in the ballpark. Hopefully, it's going to come substantially lower. But it's going to be a whole new rebuild from a system that it isn't on the roof, and it's not on a pad outside. It's an air conditioning system which is housed inside the building. So it has some very unique challenges and designs that we'll be facing. We're looking under 8023 at a $35,000 training room renovation. The training room gets a lot of use throughout the week, Monday through Friday, and then evenings as well. And, you know, the equipment down there is, the tables, the chairs, the flooring, and some other things need to be redesigned. So we can have, maintain an optimal use of that. On a side note, we're, the police department's going to be hosting a 10-week staff and command course. Where Northwestern University will be using our facility and bringing a command staff personnel, probably about 35 or so, five days a week into our station for training. And the good part is, is that all those folks will be, will be here for lunch. And hopefully, they'll be able to come back and enjoy more time in Elmhurst besides the training class. We're looking at $30,000 also out of 8023 for a video camera. Video cameras to be installed in all jail cells. So we would ensure full lockup coverage. Again, there's no current video coverage in our jail cells. And we'd be looking at updating some office, office equipment upstairs, some carpeting that's original, that's ready for replacement, two workstation cubicles to ensure ADA compliance. Again, when the building was designed, ADA wasn't on the radar at all. So we need to, we need to get that fixed up a little bit and get in compliance with ADA. And that kind of gives you an overview of all the big projects. And ready for any questions?
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Ruth? Alderman Mulliner?
Yeah, just have a couple of them. The line item for full-time has gone up by $200,000. And I was wondering, I mean, if we've been, I know we've got this staffing thing here where we're two down right now. Or is that because of the two that we're down? Or is that, why is it a $200,000 jump? We'll start with that question, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Tom?
So as chief said, we have vacancies, retirements, and people that take other positions. And so that just reflects that kind of circulation of not having staff in certain positions and going through the hiring process.
Okay. The other question was, the Explorer program, is it zero? That's line item 6087. Are we not doing the Explorer program this year? Or what's going on with the Explorer program?
The Explorer program is alive and well. We're able to use asset forfeiture funds for that program. It's a community-based, you know, it's part of a community-based policing program. So we're able to utilize that. We also take the K-9, care, maintenance, housing, medical care and everything, also out of asset forfeiture. So it's not being taken out of the general fund.
Okay. $2,000 for Narcan is a good deal. I mean, to keep people alive, let's spend the money. I have no problem with that. A question about polygraph. Do we currently have a polygraph operator in the police department?
We do not.
Who, where, what fund does that come out of if we need a polygraph operator?
If we needed to utilize one, and I must first say that, you know, the polygraph is inadmissible in court, although it is at times a helpful investigative tool, we would take it out of special investigations.
Okay.
And that would be?
6050.
6050.
Okay. And then my last question, this is kind of an interesting one. With the, I don't know, this is a delicate question to ask, because I don't want this to, we've had, there was a shooting that happened a while back in a police station from a parking deck. Have we looked into how we can make sure that our police officers are safe? Because we've got a parking deck directly adjacent to the police department. And I'm really concerned about the fact of that proximity.
As a matter of fact, we have been looking into that. As Alderman Mulliner indicated, the parking deck does look out onto the Sally Port of the police station. And so Howard Killian and engineers have been looking at some screening type material. I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
And the concern is the wind load that might happen on the parking deck. So it's not as easy as let's just put up a wall.
Okay, so there is, it is being looked at.
Yes, we are looking into that. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Alderman Haquest?
One question. You mentioned the Narcan, I think it was 14 people this year, did you say?
13 this calendar year.
And what was it last year? Do you remember? I thought I remembered four, but...
Yeah, it was a fairly low number. It was definitely less than six.
So it's tripled in the last year, pretty much. All right, thanks.
We're seeing, you know, and that's a trend that Elmhurst is seeing along with many, many other communities, is that heroin is, it's very easy to get. It's very inexpensive. And today's heroin is being laced with other things other than heroin, fentanyl and other things, which make it even much more dangerous. So it's a, it's a problem that's out there.
Thank you.
Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got, I've got three things. A clarifying question, a budget question, then I'll wrap up with a statement. Clarifying question, Alderman Mulliner asked a question, was that related to police shooting? And we're worried about, we're concerned about police safety?
That's correct.
Or is it, the screen is to prevent somebody, you know, we had a tragedy at the parking deck earlier. It's to prevent a police, somebody from taking shots at the police from the park.
My question was related specifically to shots, because there was a situation a year ago, maybe, of another police deck, not in this area, where there was shooting that took place at a police station.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood that. Second, budget-related question. So you talked about the automated license plate readers. Any, with this budget, is there room to expand if you want to? Or is this, are you assuming status quo for 2017?
I initially took the money out of asset forfeiture funds for the three locations for the cameras. And I've kind of, I know we want to test and evaluate. And if it looks like it's something that we wish to expand in, there's some funding in the federal asset forfeiture that we could, we could move forward with that. But of course, we're going to bring it to the Public Safety and Affairs Committee, and of course, to the full council.
But at this point, you're just planning on status quo?
At this point, yes.
Okay. And then, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Just a statement. I sang the praises of the fire department. I want to sing the praises of the police department. I can't imagine a more trying time to be a police officer in this country, between the internal threats, the external threats. And then, you know, we're all aware of, you know, the conversations that are happening across the country in regards, in regards to policing and how we police. Myself, Alderman Palmsky, Alderman Leader, get to work with the chief and the two deputy chiefs through public safety. And I have the highest degree of regard for our command staff, for the three individuals sitting here, and the men and women of the police force. I've gotten many positive comments from residents over the last 12 to 16 months, just complimenting us on our police force. And let's face it, when it comes to city service, streets are important. Stormwater mitigation's important, economic development's important. Those are all very important functions. But when somebody has to dial 911, you want the best there and you want them there fast. And along with the fire department, or the men and women of the police department, I have the highest degree of confidence that we've got the right people in charge. We've got the right men and women driving around in the cars. And, you know, I personally value the service they provide, but thank them for the service they provide. Because we understand, I understand right now, is it's a tough time to be a cop. And you guys do it well, and the residents appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions or comments for Chief Ruth? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I'm glad I'm going, or at least one of the last on this, because a lot of my questions were already asked and answered. The EpiPen law, I just want to kind of touch on that. And I think it's good. And I think it's good that we, as an Elmhurst, are moving forward with it. I just wanted a better understanding, I guess, for my own benefit. Is that law for just state officers? Or does that trickle down to a mandate for municipalities? And the reason why I'm asking is, are we doing it because we think it's a good idea, which I agree with? Or is it a mandate by the state's law that they passed?
Yeah, that is not a mandated law. So it's an optional law for municipalities that wish to become involved in it. But they wanted to make sure that there was a training component to it. So you weren't, you know, because unlike Narcan, if we administer Narcan to somebody, and they're not on an opiate drug, say, for example, they were just, it was alcohol, it's not going to harm them. But the improper application of an EpiPen can cause a problem. So, you know, the state, you know, when they drafted the law, wanted to make sure that those that are going to carry it have received proper and adequate training. So it's optional. But I think it's a good, it's a good tool for us to have in the event that we need it. We've got a fine paramedic service. And the fire department, the paramedics carry epinephrine. So that's the real, that's, I mean, that's even better than an EpiPen. But in the event that a crisis occurs, and it comes down to seconds, we would have, you know, based on having the training, we would have the equipment in which to be able to respond properly to that emergency.
Thank you, chief. And I just wanted that clarification, because I've heard actually two different, I've read two different sides of that discussion about what the state law really does mean to, you know, municipality. So thanks for that clarification. And as I already stated, I'm in full support of that. I think it was Alderman Healy just stated about the license plate readers. Do we, I know we had a report on license plate readers. And did, do we currently have those purchased and installed today? Or is that something that's coming either later this year or early next year from the forfeiture funds that you referenced earlier?
Right. The LPR, there's one currently up and running over at St. Charles and Fair. Cameras for two other locations, which have been identified at, in North, you know, it's going to be close to Bertow. We're trying to find the right pole for that. And then one on York Road near the 290. I've had some discussions with Public Works, and they were hoping to get to it this week. So we're hoping to have installation on the final two locations towards the end of this week. That's, that's my goal. But we do have them in our possession.
Great. Good to hear. I don't know, I'm kind of on the fence, so I'll just ask for it to be a circle back. Alderman Healy kind of touched on it already about, you know, does his budget include expansion of LPRs or not? I guess we'll see in a few weeks when we get to the end of the budget. But if I can request that to be a circle back, because at least at this time, I think it's a good idea. And I think, you know, putting it in the budget for an expansion, you know, may be beneficial at this time. So if I may make that request?
Absolutely. Put it on the circle back.
The last question is, Alderman Mulliner touched on it, was about the budget for full-time and the 200,000 increment from the, I guess, the estimated, or no, actually from budget to, no, from the estimated to the projected of 2017. My understanding, and please, either city manager or chief, correct me, but that for the 2016, weren't we budgeted for the full 68 sworn officers? Because the response I thought I heard was that we needed, the additional increment is because we didn't have the two, I believe it was two additional sworn officers. But wasn't the 2016 budgeted for all 68?
My understanding is, yes, it was. But what happens is, when an officer leaves at the department, generally, there's, we don't fill the vacancy the next day. Just logistically, you just, you just, you can't do it. So we have to go through the process, interview the candidates, get all that set, and then wait till the next academy comes. So you might see a three-month window. So if, you know, the next academy that we would send our people to will occur in January, I don't know, January 7th or so. Then after that, it's going to be, you know, mid-March or... So depending on when the retirement is, depending on if we can get somebody through the testing process, there's a conditional offer of employment that takes place. Once there's a conditional offer of employment, they get sent to a medical psychological. If they wash out in that phase, then we got to go back to the square one and try to get them through. So, you know, as much as I'd like to get somebody on board right away, we have to go through the process.
Understood. Thanks for that clarification. That shed the missing link that I was missing on that part. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions for our police department? Alderman Dunn?
Alderman Healy mentioned the situation with the fire department of having to respond to neighboring communities and the... and the frequency of that, where we're providing support to other communities versus those coming into ours, is generally nets out to be not favorable for us. Do we have a lot of that in the Police Department, where we're going into other communities, they're coming into ours? Or isn't it as significant as the Fire Department?
It's not as significant. If I were to give it a number, I would probably say less than two percent. And again, if there's a situation that requires a mutual aid request, of course, we'll respond to that. And I think we've only had to call mutual aid on one or two occasions. And usually, it was just for a short period of time. But in terms of our resources going to other communities, minimal. I think the only time we do see it on a regular basis may be with the K-9. But other than that, it's...
Okay. Any other comments? I want to thank Chief Ruth and Deputy Chief McLean and Tannahill for all their hard work and leading a terrific staff, quite frankly, and thanks for being here this evening. Thanks for all you do. I echo Alderman Healy's sentiments. Tough time to be a cop, and I think you have, what do I have the right count? Seventeen elected officials who support you 100%, so thank you for all you do. City Manager Grabowski. I know I mentioned 10:30, but I forgot to mention that it feels like 5 to 11 right now. And I'm seeing some, to be polite, droopiness around the dais. And I think we need to take that into account. What? Well, that's, I'm getting to that.
Sorry.
So I'd ask you to take that into account as we look at what we're going to cover. And is there staff here that needs to be here or that we're going to cover? Or what are you thinking right now?
It's like you're reading my mind, Mayor. We do have some staff here that are here specifically for the departments. Bruce Dubiel, Than Warner, and Mike Stenson. So I would ask Mike Cobb to come up and cover those three departments. And then perhaps we can wrap it up for the night. We can postpone Administration and Finance until the next meeting.
Council okay with that?
Excellent.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding of the heads, but they're only nodding one way. They stay down. All right. Let's see what we can get done. I appreciate it.
Looks like Human Resources. So we're going to start with Human Resources, page 115.
Okay?
Okay. Human Resource Department continues to support the city by developing and managing employee resources, including staffing, recruitment managing, employee labor relations, performance management. They also act as liaison to the Board of Police and Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, the Health Insurance Committee, Safety Committees, Wellness Committees, as well as the Labor Management Groups. Collective bargaining will begin the first quarter of 2017 with the police and fire contracts coming up on May 1st. And the budget itself, line item 3052 Professional Services, that includes $60,000 for training, organizational employee development, safety, customer service, harassment prevention, along with technical training allowing for the ERP software application, business process review, and $30,000 for the continuation of the ERP software application, business process review. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cobb? No questions? We have a question? No questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Bram.
Sorry, as I was turning the pages, you were speaking, so I might have missed the summary there. But I believe we're on page 115. The two questions I have on that page is 30-47 physical examinations. Is that examinations across all city employees? What is...
It's just per contract with the fire contract. We're required to have firefighter physicals on an annual basis, and that's the majority of it. There's also CDL drug testing, as well as the physicals for new hires.
And the only other question is on, obviously, the same page, 3052 Professional Services. What does that encompass? Was that what you were rattling off when I was turning?
Yeah, the majority of it is training, and that's about $60,000 of it. And there's about $30,000 to continue that business process review and training as we go through the business process review for our ERP, for the BERPs themselves, plus as they come back with recommendations, the training to implement those recommendations.
Why wouldn't that line item be under Training 60-11, Conferences, Seminar and Training?
Normally, the Conference Seminar and Training is the actual, the training of our staff going out, the HR staff training. The Professional Services Training on this line item is for the entire city. So normally, all the training for organizational development per that type of stuff, and organizational-wide training usually comes through that line item.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Next, Mr. Cobb.
Next is the IT. Again, it continues to support the computer, data, and voice technologies. IT this last year processed over 2,800 requests for service, 10 million emails, and recycled over 7,000 pounds of electronics. This year, we're working on upgrading our Novell File Server to Windows 2012, and that will continue throughout 2017. We're also slated to upgrade our GroupWise email, and the big upgrade is to enhance the calendar and smartphone integration, to link those two together more efficiently. And also, this past year, we completed our data backup center, and we'll continue to add replicated servers in the future. Our first one, we're going to start off with, is replicating real-time, the AS400, which is our ATE, which is our main software for almost all our applications here in City Hall. So we'll have real-time backup on that. That's being done right now. Hopefully, by the end of the year, that'll be complete. Also, over this last year, and will continue on as we increase our bandwidth to all our city locations, we, through Comcast Ethernet, private line, local area network, it's like a sort of a hybrid fibers. Two of the buildings have actual fiber, City Hall and the Public Works Garage. And so we'll continue to upgrade that. It gives us a lot more abilities. One of them that we're working on right now is the capability to have Channel 6 programming live. If you have AT&amp;T U-verse right now, you can watch city council meetings live on Channel 99. Comcast, we cannot do that yet. But with this new fiber coming in the City Hall, we should be able to do that. We'll do the actual programming here, rather than just videoing it and then bringing it to the Comcast office to be played, whatever, twice a week. So we'll be able to hopefully originate it here. Continue to work on our wireless technology. Just recently, with the help of our new parking deck on Addison, we hooked the microwave between the library and City Hall, which before, there were T1 circuits being paid for at over $200 a month. The payback is less than a year to put that technology in. Plus, our bandwidth goes from like 1.5 meg to like 700. It's a huge difference, so that's a big update. And also, Jim mentioned about the VoIP phone system. Hopefully, it'll be completed by early 2017. And then looking at 3052, the increase on that was, we're looking at a study to look at City Hall, the IT department, and get a design, get a consultant to help us make it the most efficient we possibly can. Plus, also, we're looking at updating the 2011 IT study that was done by NIU. And so hopefully, we'll get that, both of those accomplished in 2017. And lastly, I just want to point out that in the budget, IT, once the budget's established, gets allocated out to all the different departments under 9501. On page 366 of your budget, it actually shows a breakdown. It's really broken down by the number of computers...
Hold on, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cobb, that's a very important point. Back up again. What page did you cite there?
Page 366 has a breakdown of how the charges are determined, and it's really based on the number of computers assigned to that department. And so in 9501, on every line item, on every budget, you'll see their share of the IT budget.
Got it. Very important, 366. Okay, good.
And questions?
Alderman Bram.
Actually, just a couple, few comments. I think a lot of the new stuff, if you will, or the justification forms in here, highlight a lot of really good things coming down the line from an IT perspective. I mean, we talk about police, we talk about fire, rightfully so. But it's good to see us making some good headway on the IT front as well. You know, talking about having an IT workroom. I'm actually kind of surprised we don't already. Having an Intranet or a WAN for the city of Elmhurst, also really good. The one question I do have is, Assistant City Manager Cobb, you mentioned in regards to changing from, I believe, a T1 to RF?
It's microwave, actually.
Microwave?
You can see it, if you look on the top of the, what would it be, the southeast corner of our ass and parking deck, you'll see the microwave dish up there.
And is that to communicate to the other city buildings, or...
Currently, it's from us to the library.
Okay.
And that's all that's on it right now.
Okay. The reason why I ask is, obviously, T1 is a dedicated line, right? Where you don't have security issues, microwave, RF, that type of thing is some security issues. So I was just wondering on where the communication was going back and forth on that.
It's a direct line of sight type of thing on a microwave.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Assistant City Manager Cobb on this?
The next is the Planning, Zone, Economic Development.
Is this next and last? Is that what I heard?
Well, there's ITs after this.
I thought we just did IT.
I'm sorry, building. I'm sorry.
Planning and zoning, and then building, and then...
See? See what happens when we go late? All right. Planning and zoning. Mr. Cobb, what page?
Page 120. Taking it real quickly here. Couple of big things for the zoning and planning, or Planning and Zoning Department, was the downtown plan getting adopted this year. And currently, we're working with the Zoning and Planning Commission to try to make some of the recommendations on downtown planning to reality. It's a tough, long process, but we're working on it now. We've held some workshops, and we'll continue to move that forward. And the big thing in 2017 is, we're going to look at our 2009 comprehensive plan. There were nine sub areas in that plan. And so we're coordinating right now a meeting with both the DPZ Committee and the ZMP Commission to meet as a joint committee to discuss those nine sub areas. How's Levine right now is helping us evaluate those nine areas, pros and cons of taking a look at what development possibilities there are. Just as an example, one of the areas is the Lake Street TIFF 5. So we're thinking that's probably one of the priority areas to take a look at. So we're going to look at those nine sub areas in the comprehensive plan, and based on our budget, we'll see how many areas we can, we'll prioritize the areas and see how many we can come up with. But, and this is quickly other stuff that's going on. I mean, we're really excited about TIFF 4. And since Mariano's went in and kicked that thing off in 2012, a lot of great things have been happening ever since then. And we can take a look at just a great illustration of the reinvestment in the areas, the Thornton's Gas Station. That vacant, that property's had vacant for over 10 years, and look what's in there now. It's still working out great. Some of the other things is just that revitalization of the York Center Plaza at Crestview in York, where that was having real issues with their vacancy. If you look at it now, it's almost 100% full, and we're equating that to a lot of just the development that's going on up there. Elmhurst Edwards Hospital is just putting a physician center in across from where Wilkins Hyundai Mazda is, which is also putting two separate dealerships in right now, making a huge multimillion-dollar investment in the area. And this physician center is going right across the street where you see those three empty lots right now. They also took one of the single-family homes that was there and demolished that to make this possible. And then LA Fitness, which opens its doors to the public today, which we're excited about that. And then that Outlet, which Starbucks and Bentley's pet stuff, and the massage, the hand and stone massage, they've all, they've become a destination already. Over the last year, 80 new businesses have registered with the city of Elmhurst, and we're proud to become the national, the North American headquarters for Gerber Collation and Glass and Unity Railway Supply, and just opened their doors in Elmhurst. We continue to try to foster relationships, the Economic Development Team. And we've had success this year with meeting with some of the members of the Business Park. And it was Mustardy Platt hosted the meeting. And a unique thing that happened with it, one of the other businesses that just happened at the meeting, the owner of E.L. Faust, who does air purification systems. After the meeting, Bob Platt offered a tour of his building, and they walked by a lab, and he goes, "What's that lab for?" He said, "It's, we do testing for certifications." And E.L. Faust Company has been looking for someone to certify a mercury vapor filtration system. But what happened...
What were they looking for?
A mercury vapor filtration system, certification of it. And he had a hard time trying to find it. We're just two blocks away from his business, it's been sitting there this whole time. He was able to put one together with a dentist's office, which is what it's for. And he's got the certification, which is opening all kinds of opportunities with him with the Dental Association. So sort of exciting that we had this meeting. We're going to, one of the plans for 2017 is to set up a Business Park Plan to look at revitalization, beautification, and workforce issues. And one of the things, we applied for a grant to put a sidewalk all the way down Industrial Drive. It looks like that's going to be a good possibility. We may get that grant. And that's one of the issues that they've talked about. Today's workforce, millennials, they want to go out and go walk for lunch. But right now, you're walking on the street in industrial, in our Business Park. And so trying to put some paths in there and some sidewalks, or we're trying to develop a plan for that next year. That's about it, I would have had it, let me see. Yeah. Any questions on APZ?
Okay. Planning, Zone, Economic Development. Elmhurst is booming. Any questions for Mr. Cobb? Mr. Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Professional Services, line item 3052. I assume that is what you're stating is the comprehensive plan? Is that what those dollars are?
That's part of it. That's also, we put money in every year for any kind of TIFF analysis we have to do. And we also, we're going to take a look at updating, part of their downtown plan was updating our plan development ordinance. Right now, it's, we're trying to do one just for the Central Business District. Ours, it should be an incentive for a developer to use the plan development. Ours is more of a hindrance than is an incentive. Where if it's done properly, it's not as much burdensome where a concept is brought to the city council, and we're basically saying, yeah, the concept looks good as long as you work all the details out. Right now, if you've seen the couple that it went through, Elmhurst 255 was one that went through it recently. There were a handful of exceptions that had to be made to the plan, where that's really not the way, the correct way to have a plan development.
And the other just comment is, it's good to hear, you already mentioned in regards to the North York TIFF. You know, LA Fitness just opened it up today, which is ahead of schedule. They planned it in December. To see it open up in the beginning of November is excellent. Hand and stone massages around the corner, Bentley's. So it is jumping, you know, the car dealerships, once they are done with their renovation, and then the hospitals, physician center. So it's great to see and a lot of excitement to come to the north side and experience a lot now what it has to offer. Goldfish, I forgot the name of it, Swimming Center is doing severe renovations on that York Center strip mall. I mean, I don't know how many, I would guess hundreds of thousands of dollars they're investing to dig out that area to add that pool inside that center. So great to see.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Cobb? Building, our last line item? Yes? Good to see you, Mr. Dubiel.
Okay. Through October of 2016, Community Development Department has issued over 2,500 permits with a total construction value of over $160 million. Our inspectors performed over 8,000 construction-related inspections. Code enforcement officers have addressed over 730 code violations, and had 3,100 actions taken through inspections, follow-up inspections, and adjudications. Through October this year, we've had 105 new home permits as compared to 102 last year, with an additional of 20 new homes planned currently in the queue for plan review. As we continue to address stormwater issues, we had 12 new check valves put in this year. It brings 177 total, and seven new overhead sewers, which is 149 total. So 326 homes in all have been protected from stormwater backups. And an important reminder about that is that clear water has to be moved to get the reimbursement for either a check valve or the stormwater. Also, I know last year, there was some discussion regarding the permit review time. We've worked with engineering and our building department. We have it now down to four weeks. And a couple of the big changes was a checklist developed for the architects and engineers to look exactly what they should be submitting. And then in the engineering department, we set a policy where within 72 hours, every plan will be looked at to make sure that everything that was supposed to have been submitted was submitted. Because in the past, with the stormwater issues, it's much more difficult than it was in the past for the engineering side of it. And so this way, at least the engineering firm knows if there's an issue with their application right away, rather than waiting a couple of weeks before we get a chance to really review it. So that's really brought the time down, and we're about four weeks right now. Also, we plan on, you know, we had a brisk activity this year. We're hoping for, again, a next year, some of the big projects, whether you should see coming up in 2017, are the Fitness Formula Club on Addison Street, the Opus Apartments at 100 North Addison, the Elmhurst Brewing Company at 171 North Addison. at 100 North Addison, the Elmhurst Brewing Company at 171 North Addison, the Beerhead Tap at 100 North York Street, and then hopefully the completion of the York Building, which is the old class development site. And questions?
Okay. Alderman Levin.
Question on our inspectors related to not buildings, but for zoning, for building code enforcement. Is that, are we at one and a half or two full-time on that?
We're at one full-time and two part-time.
Any questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And Alderman Levin's questions, I want to just follow up on that. Is there a need, do we foresee a need in whatever, 2017 or later, for additional code enforcement officers? From at least what I've seen, they're in high demand. They get requested to review various issues throughout the city on a frequent basis. So has it been considered of expanding maybe even the number of part-time code enforcement officers, full-time, both? Where are we with that, and does it need to be reevaluated?
We evaluate that pretty much on a regular basis, and at this point, we feel that we have the correct staffing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I, yeah, a point on that? You can...
I just want to do a circle back on it if...
Okay. Circle back on code enforcement.
So, may I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The other two items that I wanted to touch on since Alderman level 11, it is getting late.
See? Tick-tock, folks.
Made mention about the circle back. Line item 30-12 consultant fees and 30-92 contract staffing. I know there's a J form for that one, but can you provide some additional detail on 3092, and then also explain what 30-12 is for?
3012 is pretty much our plumbing inspector. It's a contract service. It covers almost all of that. There's also Thompson Elevator does our elevator inspections and elevator plan review. That line of dollars in there also. The contract staffing is we, some of it, if you saw in 2016, there was $10,000 put in there in case we get any issues with the plan review process or overload on inspections. But in 2017, due to some, I guess, health issues with one of our inspectors, we were looking at the possibility of needing some extra staffing to fill that position.
Thank you.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, maybe a comment on the code enforcement. And I don't know whether or not it would have budgetary impacts, but maybe it's something else we could look at when we come back to this. It seems to me, I think it's mentioned in the narrative about the building department, that our code enforcement is mostly complaint-driven. And I've gotten, I've heard from a number of residents over the past year about building sites. Not, sometimes it's sites that are under construction, and in other cases, it's sites that there might be a vacant home, it might be a parcel that's owned by a builder, developer, but hasn't had activity yet. And I'm wondering if in those cases, if they have a permit that's been pulled, if we can do more routine enforcement that's not complaint-driven, or in cases where we know there's a vacant home or a site that is to be built on in the future, if we can do the same type of thing, a more routine review of those parcels instead of waiting for complaints. I think, for the most part, residents that I talk to seem to be pretty patient and understanding during the construction process. But if there's a, you know, an inconvenience or an eyesore that's associated before construction even gets started, I think we're wearing down residents' patience before they even start a project. So I, you know, I'm wondering, one, if we do that now, or if we do wait for complaints, and if we don't do it automatically, would we need more staff in order to kind of monitor that better?
That's a good point. We do, on the known construction sites, we do do routine inspections of those sites. That's one of our part-time code enforcement's responsibilities. But as far as the homes that are slated to be tore down that we don't necessarily even know about right away, that's a good point. Well, we'll talk about that when we come back with the circle back. We'll report on that.
Thank you.
Great. Any final comments? City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. One final comment regarding everything that Assistant Manager Capp brought up. We've made a lot of changes over the last couple of budgets, and, you know, I appreciate everything that IT is bringing out, that the building department is doing, and HR, Valerie, has just been fantastic for me as a, as a resource. But last year, we started the position of the Business Development Coordinator. And that, in my career, I've found that economic development is very hard to measure. I think in Elmhurst, we've seen quite a bit of growth, and so that's been a somewhat easier thing to, to measure. But a lot of what Erin does is building relationships, and she has done a really fantastic job of that over the past year. And you're seeing the results of that as we talk about all these businesses opening, and possibilities, and connections that are happening. And so I just want to, I want to compliment Mike for his leadership on that, and certainly Erin and her position as well.
Alderman York?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one, like, one, a couple of general comments on the budget overall, just for the City Council's understanding. We're currently reviewing the tax levy in our committee. But I just wanted to bring to the attention of the City Council that what city staff has proposed with this budget will result in a tax levy if we just adopt what's proposed of $310,000 less tax levy this year than last. So this is the first time that I can remember where city staff has come to City Council with a budget that's actually looking for a lower tax levy than the previous year. So I'd just like to bring that to note to everybody. That's in spite of almost a $700,000 increase in pension costs for police and fire. So I think what we've gotten here in this budget is extraordinary first effort. So I'd just like everybody to keep that in mind. And then in regards to one thing that this committee keeps their eye on, and that's fund balance, if we, there's going to be a dip into fund balance for this budget of about $3.6 million. But even with dipping into the fund balance this year at that proposed amount, and obviously we have circle backs and we have discussions to be had, and the tax levy isn't determined at this point in time, but we would be looking at still having a surplus fund balance over 33% of about $1 million, and over the 25% reserve of just under $5 million. So anyway, I just wanted to lay those parameters on the table and just say, you know, from our first pass, I certainly appreciative of the city staff's efforts on putting together this budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other final comments? I know it was at the tail end, but I do appreciate the economic development and the growth that we see around Elmhurst. It's really what allows us to continue to provide services without continuing to raise our taxes. So kudos to everyone on those efforts. Seeing no more comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Hanquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.